Sorry that everyone's still munching, but. I'm gonna go ahead and get working on the proposed budget. Michael, is there anything you want to start with?
Sure, excuse me. Thank you, Mayor Protem. So Mayor Protem and Suzanne and I talked earlier today on how we might best organize this workshop. And my hope for this evening, obviously, council can do as it wishes. But because it is two hours of time and because the budget is a fairly lengthy document, my suggestion is to go council member by council member with their questions, if there are suggestive revisions, we go by council member rather than page by page, because that does take quite a bit of time. Obviously, if y'all want to do that, we can do that. That's the suggestion. If there are changes, obviously, I would imagine it's a consensus of four of you to do that. We have a couple easels back here to keep track of everything and give you a visual. This is something I brought with me from Aurora. It's not novel or very creative, but it is effective. And so we, this way, we can, if something's added, let's make sure that we balance it out as best we can, sort of thing. Suzanne and I will keep track of all that. So is that, does that work?
Yeah, so I was thinking, I know that we ended on questions with Rusty and Robert, so I thought we could just start that direction. And if each council member wouldn't mind either recapping their questions and bringing their answers that they've received, or if they didn't receive their answer clear, or if they need clarification to let Michael know. So, because I know that we got some answers. And so if you want to share those answers with the public, that would be great. And if you have further questions, and then just be mindful of everyone's time, so.
And one other thing I might mention here, I don't have handouts for y'all on this, but since October 15th, when we issued you the proposed budget, we've been going through it, and there's a few other things, as I mentioned last time, that need to be corrected and changed. And so just verbally, I wanted to go through those with you. Most of them were in the general fund, and they actually worked out in our favor. So that's something to keep in mind if there are things you wanted to add to the budget. We did, in the culture, started with the Culture and Rec Fund, though. We had $10,000, $10,200 in overtime that didn't need to be in there, so we pulled that out. There was a capital project in the Police Department for an HVAC system that did not get taken out. So that was repeated again as a capital project in '22. So that's $60,000 that we pulled out of the budget. Another $40,000 we pulled out in subsidy from the general fund to the cultural fund. We don't need that, so that's another $40,000 to the good for the general fund. Councilmember Nakai had asked a question, well, do we, have you liked electricity and natural gas costs? And we have, but I don't think it made it in there. Natural gas, we haven't seen any reason to suggest it go up. Electricity, however, there's a, we have a one-time rider from Core Energy that we expect to add about $14,000 to our electric bill for '22. So we did add some money, $14,000 to the budget for that. We just made a small adjustment to our taper balance, $9,200. We also have updated projections for 2021. I think I'm saying this right, oh, excuse me, 2020, after finally completing the audit. And so our fund balance actually went up in the general fund by $158,000. And then, I think that's it, actually. So you don't need to memorize all that, but there, in the general fund. Oh, good. There'll be a quiz later, but you don't need to remember it. But for the general fund, that, that gives you about $88,000 to work with, just creating space, so. But if council does wish to add things to the budget, we can talk through how best to do that, as soon as consensus on adding that, right? So if you do this, we can do other things, but we can talk about it. So, do we have Rob, or Rob, Rob, do we have Aaron?
Yes.
We do have Rob Fisher. Okay.
Hey, Aaron.
Hello.
So do you want to go ahead and start with Rusty?
Sure. And I got a heads up, Robert, they're starting with myself and yourself, because we have a tendency to ask a lot more questions. Stephanie, you'll probably be third in line, so that we don't run out of time. I've got a lot of questions, so if I miss some of yours, I'll try to go as fast so everybody gets time to go back. What I'm planning to do is start with the big questions we asked, and I'll probably do a little tag team going through the document. Starting with the first question that I had asked was to consider finding ways to enhance compensation for frontline employees to better allow them to afford to live in Woodland Park, consider adding a performance-based or merit-based compensation for employees. We were all provided a separate package of information from Michael, and I appreciate that. I had met with him prior to getting that and had actually gone through every position that I had asked to see. And I will tell the citizens that I was a little bit surprised in a different direction. I was expecting to see salaries leaning towards the higher end, or at least above the midpoint. And what I saw was very few people even close to the midpoint. There are a few that are above, quite a few are below. I'm not going to go into any details, other than saying, I am very comfortable with your 3% from the, for the 2021 and the 3% for this that was requested. In fact, I scratched my head looking at the numbers. I'm not going to put this out on the table, but I was actually thinking, why aren't we bumping it up 4.5% to get closer to what the national average? But I think, considering where we live, in Woodland Park, the 3%, bringing them up closer to the midpoint, we're a little bit further, there are a lot of them are right there by the bottom. But it does bring them a little bit further away from the bottom with the 3%. You've looked at the budget, I'm sure you've discussed it with your department heads, what would keep the citizens happy? I'm comfortable with the 3% bump. So let me pause there, so we can have discussion, maybe? Is that how you'd like to do it?
Sure. So the exercise was helpful.
It was very helpful. Eye-opening on, we tend to be a little lower. Stephanie, I'm not sure what your thoughts are on that. I know I was watching your body language, you may have some thoughts.
I've always been comfortable with the 3% for this last year and this coming year. I have no issues with it whatsoever.
Sorry, I misread the body language. Robert, you okay? Silence is accepted. Here, take another bite.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with a 3% escalator for cost of living and all. But as I looked at the compensation market study of $115,000, which includes a market study and some sort of compensation adjustments on it, my thought is, as building a little on what Rusty said last, the last meeting, is that I think that a way that we increase creativity and performance with the staff is to look at things like, for example, if you're in your position, you save the city X amount of dollars as a one-time savings, that should be acknowledged and rewarded. And a percentage of that, figure out what that is, I don't know. If you save the city an ongoing amount of money, let's say you save the city $50,000 a year, and it's measurable, it can happen every year, then I think it's a reasonable incentive to offer that employee who excels in that regard and saves the city money, therefore, it improves our bottom line, offer an ongoing increase from that or bonus, if you like. But it would be if they're saving it as an annual cost, it would get, they would get remunerated for that for as long as they're with the city. The third one would be, well, if it's non-tangible value incentives, such as maybe efficiencies in their department, their attitude, which creates greater goodwill amongst the staff around them, or, or team efficiencies, I think that should also be a way of measuring of how to look at this, this improvement. It troubles me that we had a 30, what'd you say, 34%, 37% attrition rate in staff. Some of it I understand without going into detail, but some of it is, yeah, we are, we are losing some of our employees to competition. So if you have an in-house way of motivating staff in a way that saves the city money, and therefore can go to their bottom line as far as an employee, I would be very open to creating a budget number that could be defined with those types of examples of metrics. I think that's all on, one other thing. And I guess my other question was, given the chart you gave us this week, what's the justification of spending another 15 grand for a market study on, on salaries? Well, we have, we have, you've given, you've provided us with the, with the worksheets on, on market studies averages, whatever. Why would we be wanting to spend another $15,000 on that? Why wouldn't we just be applying that funds into the sort of incentive program? I, I'm not saying that's absolute what I'm saying, but what I'm suggesting. Why spend an extra $15,000?
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
You have multiple answers. Okay, go ahead. I'm going to keep having my members first.
Well, two things I'd like to comment, Councilmember Zuluwaga. I don't know if you were on council when Mayor Carr introduced the incentive program to employees. He was, that was one of his ideas two years ago in the budget. He, he wanted to start a program similar to that. A pot of money that if an employee saved the city money, that it would be distributed. So it's nice to hear that revisited. The second thing is the market study, and I would have Amy's here with us as HR too, to help with these kind of questions, is to make sure these ranges are correct, to make sure that a planning director is getting, you know, a grade 15, that that range is what the market is having right now for 2022. Is that how you would answer it, Amy?
I would, as part of a compensation strategy, we did a major compensation study started in 2018, where we did reviews of job descriptions, were they accurate? Looking at, were they in the correct grade? Were we at market pricing? So as part of that study, about every two or three years, you should just revisit and make sure there haven't been any dramatic changes. So as part of our overall compensation structure, every few years, we should be relooking at the market values. So we aren't doing the huge research again. It's just, are we in line with market for 2022?
And that's, that's what it costs you.
Yes.
To make those adjustments.
Just, it's just under our quote, is just under 12,000 right now.
And we just got that quote.
Correct.
So I have a quick question, then. Where did the numbers that we've been presented come from?
With this, it was from our study done in 2018, which finished up in 2019. Those are where they're coming from.
The only thing I would say, Robert, is I strongly agree with your recommendations. When I spoke to you, Michael, I said I'd like to see some sort of incentive. I didn't give any guidance or thoughts about how to do it. I left it up to you. What you actually mentioned, that's the way the military, the Army, does have a program identical to your first and second suggestions, where if a soldier saves the military, you know, some amount of money, they get a piece of it. So however you want to structure the $100,000, if there's a consensus on what you've proposed or what's in vows, I would, I would be a part of that consensus opinion on how to do it.
So a couple of thoughts that I made. My previous organization, we have a program like that rewarding innovation. But I also, it sounds like I'm also hearing there's one for innovation. If you create efficiencies, business process improvement, there's perhaps a cut for you. I like those, because a lot of times you find those in the field applications, and it reaches those folks on the front line, so those are, those are cool programs. Customers, I also hear, in my mind, customer service, I hear attitude. That's something that Amy and Suzanne and I have bounced around and Rob as well for some time. Rob, having a military background, not to speak for him, but he's, he's all about, and is familiar with those programs as well. So that's something we could absolutely do. I, my question for, for the two of you is, I'm hearing two different things. So I hear Councilman Neal saying, part of that $100,000, use that towards rewards. Or is it for Councilmember Zuluwaga saying, maybe put a program together and come back, and we might consider an additional preparation.
Well, for a working number right now, you can work with that, that money that's in there. But I'm not opposed to it, because when you look at the numbers and you look at, it's pretty clear. You know, if somebody spends the time in their job and they think it through and they bring a suggestion, I mean, every workplace has suggestion boxes. Well, I think the suggestion boxes should be something that is measurable and rewardable. And, and you know, when you have 37% return attrition rate in your staff, that goes back to job satisfaction or job attitude. It's, we don't all just change jobs because of money. It's also about workplace environment. So if we can, if we can create a employee retention concept that really, you know, makes people excited to come to work, because there is some greater reward than just showing up and leaning on the shovel, I'm just talking about, you know, the typical perceptive perception. I think it could be a win-win for all of us.
I think, I think we might even have a natural progression in that direction with regards to environment, because I think our environment has made a big change, particularly with the leadership. And I think that that with time will continue to improve that morale in the whole piece that you're speaking to.
Yeah, that, that's caught or captured in your item C idea for those type of jobs that are not like engineers, where it's real easy to find the cost savings, but it gives them a way to get a little bit of a bonus too, so that's a great idea.
I think Michael just creates a whole attitude approach that's much more pleasant and calm and comfortable. How'd I do?
Councilmembers Zuluwaga, what I think that we need clarity on is, if we do the market survey, we do need to have a pool of money if we want to make those adjustments. So are we able to keep that $100,000 for the market adjustments and then have an additional pool for these incentives? Or do you see it coming out of the $100,000? I think that's what the question is.
Just, want to answer something? Oh, well, I just want to say that, just like, we don't appropriate something towards a project until it's laid out. I think that we don't know what the study is, and it should come back as a special appropriations at a later date. Should be the way that that goes. So I think that, you know, you might like to put in, put in your $12,000 for your study, put in an amount for incentive, employee incentive as a separate line item. And then if you come back as an appropriation on a later date, that would be another whole way to present that, I think.
I, I think we can do that. It's, it will take us a little bit of time to put together a whole ecosystem. It's all things we, all of us have seen before in other places, and we can replicate that maybe fairly easily. But it will take time. We, just with the natural timing of things, I think we can probably shave a little bit of $100,000 off. We'll see. If we, if we come back to the market research and be like, oh my gosh, we got to spend every dollar of this right now, then conceivably, we could come back and be like, yeah, remember that great idea you had? We'd like to employ compensation, employee retention and rewarding. We could use a little more help.
Just keep in mind, there's an election. And by the time that comes around, we may not be sitting here. So if you really want to make, see that happen with this budget cycle, maybe putting, reserving, putting some money in to implement the market study might be wise. Just thinking ahead.
Well, I guess what I wanted to do is address, I was thinking actually the $100,000 was going to be a part of the, the incentive program that Robert was talking about. I now understand that that's, once we spend the $15,000 to see how the bracket shift, we may need to bring. I did see there are some employees that are sitting at the exact bottom dollar number. So if there was a shift up, they would, they would be the ones that would instantly be targeted for a compensation adjustment. But I don't think you'll, you'll consume the entire $100,000 to do that. So what would happen with the remainder of that? Still used to spread out to those that are at the lower end?
You have to still not just bring the bottom up to the bottom of the new range. You have to create that internal equity with everyone else in there. You can't just move the bottom, because then you're encroaching on people, someone that may have been hired five months ago, that's brought up to the bottom. Now, he's making the same as someone's been here three years. That internal equity component still has to be evaluated as well to keep that natural spread, if you will, that shows experience and time.
Yeah, and I've seen that at both ends, both the government, wherever, everybody's paid the same in a salary range, and I've seen it at the Capitol, where when you come in and negotiate your salary, if you're a bad negotiator and you walk out making $20,000 less than the guy next to you, even though they got the same time, in grade, same skills, that's, that's the way the capital market works, and you live with it. And people don't share salaries in the, in the commercial world like they do in the, in the government world. So we're saying that that $100,000 is not just to get it to the, to the minimum level that might have some residual. Is that what, I'm, I'm looking for, is that what everybody agrees to?
That's how that implementation happens.
No, I have a different idea about it. And that is, we have a 37% attrition rate. So let's look at those positions, let's look at what the market, what the market study is of those salaries. Let's look at, of those, was the moving on of their own volition? Was it because of the pay? Was it of, I mean, unsatisfactory work performance? And once you evaluate the 37% of our staff who we've lost and we're looking to replace, that's where we should start. We want to make sure that we're not, that we're not missing something there. The rest of the staff, I really think that we should be looking at incentive programs, because I'm not a socialist, I have no interest in equity for everybody. We have equal opportunity, we don't all perform without opportunity the same. So for, so for, no, I'm, I'm just giving my perspective on this, so. So I'm not for, oh yeah, okay, you know, you do, you just show up to work and you automatically get an escalator. I'm not, I'm not for that. I really think it needs to be tied to how you're contributing to the, to the city teams. What's it, to performance and be measurable and be, and be fair, so. Yeah, so that's, that's all.
And know that that's not what I'm talking.
I, I didn't know you were, it's just, I just had it, that's how to say it my way.
And remember, remember, you have to be careful of discriminatory implementations. And so I hear a lot of discrimination in what you're describing.
Really, how, how are you seeing?
You can't just pick and choose. You have to look at the structure. And then the, the pay for performance is a different piece. But you can't discriminate just because 34% is, is where the attrition is happening. You can't just address the 34%. You have to look at the whole structure. No, you can't. Amy?
So when looking at compensation, we do take into account, especially with the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act that was instituted January 1st of this year through the state. If we have discrepancies in pay within any Title VII protected classes, there has to be a justification. Because what has happened in the marketplace over time is that there has been discrimination, one of them based on gender. So if we have a female in the same position, let's say it's a perfect world, okay? I'll give you the perfect world example. We have a female who is in the same position as a male, they've been with the city exact same amount of time. They have the same certifications, everything is identical, and she is paid less? We have a problem. She might not be part of that attrition rate. So yes, we do have to take into account, and we do have a structure built to make sure that we are looking to see if there are any, if there's any discrimination within our pay, because that is something that has happened. So we are very aware of that. So we can't just say because of attrition that we're going to pay these people differently. There are several different factors that we need to look at. So for me, Councilmember Zuluwaga, I think that's one of them that we could look at. What are those positions? Why are they leaving? And then incorporate that into our full structure for compensation, is what I would prefer to do, if you're okay with that.
Well, I'm uncomfortable now, because what you've just described is how the military, every job, regardless of male, female, if you've been in X number of years, you are paid identical. But then you don't need a range. Our whole salary structure is based on a range. Some people are down here, so I'm uncomfortable with the words you just gave, because it, it sounds like, okay, we're just going to go in and give everybody, we've got to figure out what the lowest common denominator is, and then everybody comes, or no, the highest common denominator, and everybody gets up to it. What if we got, I mean, there are a couple people, they're way up at the, the end. Now, they're not above the max, but they're at the top. Does that mean we're going to compensate them down? How are you going to do, I mean, what's your proposal?
Absolutely. So I understand, and I apologize if I misspoke. So we have people who, which you're talking about in that, that have been here 37 years.
Correct.
And you're right, they're at the top of their range. That's something, under the Equal Pay Act, I can justify why they're so high within their range. That's okay. So we still do have a range, because we have people with different certifications, different classes, different, I mean, like training classes is what I mean when I say that. So we do have that variety within our ranges. We have different positions within those ranges. So no, our structure is not to make sure everyone is equal, but that it is fair, if that makes sense.
But you're, what you described does not have a single performance component to it. And that's what Robert, and I agree with Robert. That's what I agree, should have a performance component.
So part of that performance component in, and Suzanne and Michael, if I'm saying anything incorrectly, please feel free to jump in. Part of our compensation is performance based on what education have they, what classes have they taken? What certifications do they have? What have they done to improve their job performance? Have they taken on extra tasks? So we do have that in there. The example I was giving is if we have two people who are identical, which I can tell you, we don't. But if we had two people who were identical with same certification, same years in service, same degrees, same position, then they should be paid the same. So based on performance, they took on extra duties. I mean, they are identical in every way. But we don't have that. I was just giving it as an example. So we have people who have different certifications, have taken different classes, have taken on new job responsibilities, and so they are moved up in their range for those reasons. They are a high performer. Yes, those are part of our compensation structure.
So there's still, there's still room for discretion within how employees are. So there's still, there's still room for discretion within how employees are compensated.
Yes.
What I, what I think Amy is saying is that there, if there's discrimination and it's baseless for, like, I, I like Joe better than Sue, that, that can't. Sue.
That's why I went.
Susan, right. I like Joseph better than Susan. That's, that's not okay. But as, as Amy said, there's still, there, if there's a justification for it, and it's not a question of a title, an explicit Title VII violation, then that we can still do that. And you can still reward for high performance. Might be, what I'm hearing is it might be easier to do that with one-time pays, perhaps in base building, but there's, there's still a great deal of latitude in that.
Correct. We just have to make sure with the new legislation that was passed that we are following all of the guidelines set by the Equal Pay for Equal, Equal Pay for Equal Work Act. So that's where our structure comes in, is making sure we're compliant with the new law.
So going back to where this conversation started on the attrition and Councilmember Zuluwaga's comments on looking specifically at the places where we have the highest amount of attrition. What I hear you saying is, you know, say for instance, we find that IT is something that is constantly turning over and we determine that apparently we're not at the market rate for those types of jobs. Just because we increased the pay in that type of job doesn't mean we have to go back and adjust the entire staff salary when we're looking at that specific area where we're seeing a high rate of attrition. It, it, it doesn't go across the board that we have to apply those increases to the entire staff.
Right.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Yeah, I understood that.
Can you understand that? And the, and the other question I have for you, Amy, is how do you address somebody who's overqualified, somebody who wants to come to work here, but is overqualified and you do all this equal pay for equal whatever, well, they've got all these degrees or all these trainings, but the job doesn't, the job scope of that job does not justify paying the person for everything they're qualified for. If they still want to work here, are you now violating the fact that they've been to school?
No, we aren't because we also look at their job description. So if their job description doesn't require a master's degree, but they have one, that's not necessary for their job. So we have to just look at what is the job description and what is required for that job description.
And? Yeah, what's the rest of the sentence? So you have somebody who has a master's degree, the job doesn't require that. When you make a job offer to that person, what's the conversation or how does that kind of?
You bet. So the conversation is, here's the job you have applied for. Here is the pay, which, starting pay, most of the time is right near that minimum. And they can choose to accept that or not, but that is the pay for the position. Does that, does that answer it?
Yeah. And so there's no inequity then. You're not running into some violation of the law because they have a higher certification than the job requires.
Correct.
And then how do you escalate them up past the base pay? How's that, what's that metrics? And I guess that's really what I'm talking about. The whole thing is like, yeah.
So Kip, Kip probably more than anybody else encounters this in his world.
Sorry, I've been waiting to talk for a little while. So this is what happens here. And this is how employees get mad. So typically, we're lucky to get a cost of living adjustment. On certain years, there'll be a little bit on, on top of that for performance. But when I say a little bit, let's just say, for example, this year, three percent COLA. You know, if it was an average three percent a year, just hypothetically speaking, every so often we would get another percent or a percent and a half for the performance side of things. So you do the evaluation. Everything goes through, you get a COLA and then a little bit for performance. Okay? We barely get performance. We're usually COLA, or if that. So when we do the market study, those folks who have been here a while have gotten a COLA for a couple of years. They're coming off the bottom a little bit because that COLA, but we do a market study. Oh, look, you're back at the bottom. The guy that we just hired yesterday is making the same issue and you've been here five years. They just get upset. Whether they're good, bad, or indifferent, they're just upset because they're the same. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if they're good or bad. It's just the way it is. So there's never any more than COLA. So you don't really get off the bottom unless something changes, your duties change, something like that where it's additional responsibility, then you get off the bottom. So for example, we had, we had a mechanic here who had been here for twelve years. We had a new mechanic been here three. He caught him that fast. Because he had been here when the times were good, where it was, it was, we were paid for performance. And then for a couple of years, we weren't. And when you do those market studies, the ranges go up, you're at the bottom again, and they just get mad. And they leave. I had, another, another case in point is we don't have policies in place to where you're, you're, you're given a certain increase after making probation. So we have an employee resign Friday. He's going to make ten thousand dollars more. Granted, it's Colorado Springs Utilities. But after, after probation is done, he gets a six percent increase, just like, just for complete probation. Get him off the bottom, basically. So they don't have that issue. We don't have those types of things. We've tried to, we've looked at work progression plans. We've done all types of things, but it's just, we never get off the bottom because there isn't, like, this year, three percent COLA, yep, we're going to stay at the bottom because the new market study is going to come out and it's going to have that inflation factor in there, but there's no pay for performance. So that's just how it works.
Can?
Yeah, you never get it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Colorado Springs Utilities is private, not public, correct? It's. But it's not part of Colorado Springs Government.
I mean, it, yeah, their, their council, their utility board is the same as their city council.
Okay.
And I just use that as an example. It can happen even in the, in the private sector. It all depends on whatever policies they have in place.
For instance, we had our city attorney leave. We could use him as an example.
Well, if I, if I could, because we're forty-two minutes into the session on the first question. If I could try to summarize what I've heard, that, that we're, we're saying the three percent and three percent COLA is acceptable, the hundred thousand dollars that we put there is to, you have the fifteen thousand dollar market survey adjustment, and then with the residual eighty-five thousand, you take that, anybody brings it back up, and then you're going to analyze some of the thoughts that were offered to, to you for performance-based, and you'll come back in a request for a supplemental. Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I have no issue with that. If, if council would like to do that, again, because this is a zero-cost thing right now. I don't know if we need consensus. This, this was a priority of mine anyway. It'd be nice to hear for you, that's a great idea. We, we can come back at some point after we get the market study and we can get an understanding. Because we're, we're going to need that amount of time to set up a, a recognition program anyway.
Can I just suggest that maybe, I agree with everything you guys are saying, so I don't disagree with it. After hearing Kip speak, that perhaps instead of an incentive base, that it may be as a probationary period base. Because that would be easier for the organization to implement. Like after you pass your probationary period of six months, you get some type of raise and they can determine financially, you know? And then bring that back to us, what would be best. And maybe it is.
Well, I would see that as a part of the, that hundred thousand dollars where you're making adjustments. Because you're, you're hiring new people and you put them in a probationary, and then you could give them adjustment. But I'm talking about a performance-based idea separate that we don't have any money allocated for. We've thrown out some ideas. It, it sounds like a lot of people are in favor of, but we would need you to put some structure around it and then come back with a supplemental request so that we could kind of, everybody nod, that's the direction to give the staff, so we can go on to question two.
Yes.
Real quick, before we go on to question two. Just before we go on to question two, I wanted to say on behalf of the staff, thank you for approving the three percent COLA for two thousand twenty-one and the three percent COLA for two thousand twenty-two. It is much appreciated. So thank you for that, all of you.
And I hope the citizens followed the discussion. It's a fair thing when we see six percent. We have all looked at it. It's, it's a fair adjustment. Robert, your number two question, I'm going to let you take number two and three, before it comes back to me. If you're satisfied, we can move on.
Okay. So I had asked staff to create an amortization schedule on the alternative payoff schedule for the aquatic center, debt assuming differing amounts of prepayments and interest rates. Did everybody receive one of these from staff? Yeah, you thought about that. So thank you very much for doing that. As I was pondering this and pondering Kelly's comment last council where she said, well, no further council is required to, has any commitment to putting these funds aside. I had a thought. And that is this, we can't do any prepayment till twenty twenty-five. But gee whiz, we have a park which we could just about pay that debt off with what we were planning to put aside for the aquatic center. And we would save almost a million dollars of interest. Is there any appetite on council to shift putting that money aside, which we have no control over, past our tenure? And saying, okay, let's pay off the park. It's two point, let's see if I can. Two point two four two five.
Can we prepay?
Can we do, and I don't know whether we can, Michael, whether we can.
Going to look into that.
Yeah. Well, it's.
I don't, I'm going to have to look into that more.
In your, in your manuals here, it's on page one hundred and forty-eight, if you want to look at it. And it looks to me as like calculated up the totals, it's not going to get paid off until twenty thirty-four. It's two point five eight oh, from what I see. And about nine, nine, nine hundred and six thousand four hundred dollars in interest. With the amount of money that we're looking to put aside, even what we've got right now, the one point six, whatever it is, plus whatever the five hundred thousand or is for next year, that's going to drop a lot of interest payment we're not going to have to pay. And we can get the jump on the, on the aquatic center when we can really do it and we'll, and we'll be able to have funds set aside for that. So it's just a thought. And instead of putting money in the bank or putting it in a reserve, we're getting, you know, point zero zero, whatever interest rate on, we actually do something that saves us, you know, a bunch of money. So.
You must see a piece of a call date or do we not?
Looking into it. I think if, if we can do that, I have no problem with it.
I don't mean very much in favor of that.
Yeah, mathematically, if that makes sense, I'm in favor. But the only thing that came to my mind was the discussion, and I guess this goes back to Noel Sawyer, where we were talking about, the reason why we were building that up is we would have leverage to go back and renegotiate the interest rates on the pool debt.
We have to refinance.
Or refinance it, but we could then negotiate because we're putting more in. Is those that are financially savvy here, you, you've looked at the numbers of the interest that we would save, would the leverage to get better interest rates be greater than the savings? Yeah.
There's a cost of issuance involved as well.
So this would be the smarter way to go. What Robert suggested.
I haven't put pen to paper. I'll defer to Aaron. He's the finance director now, but just be aware that refinancing debt, general obligation bonds, comes at a cost of bond counsel, all kinds of expenses.
So, and so if I made this, this is an excellent question. We will look into it no matter what. I don't know if it really impacts the twenty-two budget in terms of the amount of money, but it's just, if, if we want to pull it out of the fund balance and pay down the, the part debt, if that makes sense, hey, let's do it. And that'll be a separate conversation with you all outside of the budget. But I think that's a, I think that's a great conversation to have. You got that, Aaron?
Lost my mouse there. Uh, yes, we'll definitely look into that. Sounds excellent.
Processing.
All right. So we can move past that one first, unless somebody else wants to comment on it.
Well, and it also will, will depend on what interest rates are, where interest rates are for a refinance and whether that it's enough, enough basis points to capture savings.
Right.
And with the consideration of the cost of issuance involved. So it's, it's just, you have to look at the net sum gain.
Right.
And whether or not it's worth it wherever interest rates fall at that time. And I'm sure our credit is excellent.
Well, I, I don't know the answer to that question, but all right, so good. That's all I have to say on that one. Number three says, what is the cost of the banging the table on ongoing software commitments and community engagement functions? Break out the eighteen, three thirty-eight. So that's been broken out here for us. So thank you very much.
May I jump in for?
Please.
Muni Revs, is that within civic clerk here?
No, Muni Revs is different.
Muni Revs is a separate, separate cost center. I would imagine some finance.
It's finance, it's used for business license and sales tax and logic.
I understand the meaning of revs. I was wondering what the cost was.
Cost for many revs.
Because the only software cost that I saw under the finance department was this eighteen thirty-eight. There we go. Page forty-five. We have financial software. Well, that's in twenty twenty though.
A few of the licenses are under eighteen.
Oh, oh, I'll see if I can find an answer for that here. We'll come back to it.
Okay. And that actually, I'll just touch on, I see that we have a a bunch of notations on the budget, but we don't actually have the captions for that.
Right. Yeah, we pulled the footnotes out and did not pull actual icons or symbols.
So can we get an update of that? Because I know those were really helpful last go-round.
We, we can put those back. A lot of those, a lot of those things, we had hoped to address in an alternative way with the department summary session that was brand new and accounting for what went into all the different ads. But you're right in that it doesn't go into what's, what was previously in. So it's an IT. Line, it's a forty-three, forty.
Next page forty-six. I'm wondering if the notation for it breaks down further, what the cost for each. Yeah, because it looks like it's lumped in together.
Doesn't, it's not done with.
How it was last year, because it's.
So, Michael, I know you don't have it in here, but on page forty-six, information technology services three has escalated from an adopted budget of seventy-nine, five sixty to one twenty-nine, five sixty. What's the justification for that sort of escalation, given what we budgeted?
Okay, just that's it.
Forty-six.
Information Technology Services. It's got a parentheses three after it. Aaron, do you happen to remember what went into that one?
Yeah, this is, we were supposed to change service, I believe, in twenty twenty-one, but that has not happened yet. So we have left the projection the same because the cost has not gone down at this point.
Footnotes from Amy, thank goodness, has.
Footnotes from Amy, thank goodness, has the last year's. The footnotes for that are information technology services, contract for email services, wifi, virtual servers, how hosting Ethernet MS licensing, live streaming, dedicated internet access. So, what I hear, Aaron, is that we didn't spend that yet.
We haven't made that. We haven't not made the transition yet.
And that would be the transition for.
I thought away from peak internet was going to save us quite a few hundred thousand.
And servers, remember we have.
Right. And that that's all part of that peak transition. And we we've done the server work, but the transition to peak is taking longer. It's in process right now, but it didn't happen as was expected.
So, then in the budget, are we going to see a decrease in internet services, the fees for internet services on another line item?
It would be, I think it would be here. Is it is it this account for peak? It might be, I think.
No, it's more than that. It costs a quarter of a million dollars right now. All right.
Well, there's other there's other funds and that comes out of the utility funds. They have, we have the same line item for.
Oh, you have one. So, it's split between different.
And I think it's done by facility as well. And a lot of facilities are outside of right here. This one might be for City Hall. Just for City Hall, but we'd have to look at that.
Well, good.
Maybe this twenty one year in projection, one twenty nine, five sixty may be overstated.
I. Go ahead, Aaron.
In two thousand twenty one, it is not overstated.
Okay.
In two thousand twenty two, we do not until we make the changeover. I mean, we we could project again that it's going to be a decrease, but we we don't know for sure.
Sure.
It it will go down. We're not sure when it's.
This way.
We've been working on making that transition for some time and been having a lot to go back and forth with peak.
This is only the budget that is what's actually.
Change in ownership, I'm sure that's.
Well, back to the essence of point three, where I was going with wanting these broken out was I'm wanting to understand by implementing these technological improvements, are we having cost savings in terms of the amount of time staff has had to put into certain things? And I remember when Suze was telling us that the amount of time it takes her to write to do a to do the report for the minutes is long. It takes a lot of time. Now with this new software, it happens lickety split. So.
Not just yet. I'm learning.
Look at he splat then, right? But my point behind that is with all of these different improvements, are we having a benefit and seeing a benefit in in terms of reallocation of staff time or anything else that we could measure? So, we don't just have an escalating cost for software and the and the maintenance and whatever. And yet, we're really not. It hasn't really improved our our life and our cost of efficiencies of doing business. That's 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 underlying breaking these numbers down and asking this question.
Sure. And for for some of these, yes, some of these, no. And the these are called out because these are new softwares, as you mentioned. Excuse me, this is ongoing maintenance for those new ones. Archive Social is more of a legal protection for us, so we can automatically back up all all of our records to go on the social media. So, I guess you could see it as a time saver, because otherwise if we were doing it right, we would go back and we would take snapshots or otherwise, I have no idea how it works, but download all the social media records and that would take an inordinate amount of time. And so, this this is kind of more covering our tail. Banging the table is is more is another engagement platform to better talk to our residents. Basically, I don't know, it's so much of a time saver, but it's a way to have better customer service for the residents is how I characterize it. Civic Clerk will absolutely save us time.
And it does have a component for customer service too, because the public will be able to search minutes. Once we get everything up in there, the public can go through and search all the minutes, agendas and everything for like the past forty five years. Good. Because we can do from nineteen seventy five to present.
In Chronicles, probably the best bang for the buck out of a whole bunch. This is digitizing our cemetery management and all of our records. Instead of having shoeboxes and binders and rob. You know, we we started our our current process when cemetery opened and haven't changed it really. So, and it helps with continuity too. If Rob ever wanted to not be cemetery, all that knowledge wouldn't just cross the door with him.
So, Rob, I only have one question for you. Did we find the motorcycle?
And I'll add to that. Some things will help people actually do do all of their job in a reasonable amount of time. For instance, in finance and sales tax and business licensing software, that person probably now can actually do her full job without always trying to catch up. Those ladies in that department are always buried with all these priority baskets. There's on fire and you never get any of it done. And and it'll help them do a better job of their job. I can vouch for that. So, that's they'll, you may not see savings there, but you'll see a job done. That's all customers.
Okay, six oh one. I'm going to speed up as best I can. I saw question four where it asked a question about fifteen thousand. I saw your answer. I I'm not going to spend any time. I I I understand it. It's an acceptable answer. Does anybody want to talk about the fifteen thousand projection in the IT capital spending? Good, let's move on. I do have a follow up to question number five, which is the is there an offsetting expenditure decrease for vehicle maintenance if we replace older vehicles and what would that look like? And what you did is you provided a statement saying or the justification, and I'm going to go right to the thing that bothered me. The public works does its best to anticipate expenses. However, accidents happen and those expenses are hard to plan for. Don't we have automobile insurance for accidents? Yes. So, that should not be the one of the justifications for the plus up to twenty three five.
Most of our accidents I'm referring to aren't like tens of thousands of dollars. I mean, if we paid our deductible, it'd be twenty five hundred bucks. And when I say an accident, it's, you know, hitting a curb and you got to replace the front end and it's less than our deductible.
There's many times that we don't put an accident through the insurance company. Because like Kip said, the deductible is twenty five hundred. And so, sometimes if it's only about, if it's four thousand dollars worth of damage, we do the risk assessment and it's not worth putting in a claim for then our insurance rates to go up. The other thing is, most of the repairs, we will get insurance for the parts. But we don't get insurance for the labor. Some of this is labor. Kiff? Accident repairs?
No, I mean, we don't really charge for labor. It's all in-house.
And it's time.
Yes, it is time.
Okay, I I get a lot of what you're saying. But we've asked for four brand new police cars. And the logic is it's going to save a bunch on maintenance, yet the maintenance amount is a fairly sizable jump. So, and you gave us twenty sixteen through twenty twenty one in in an average of is what you came up with for the two thousand twenty two budget. What I would like to see is throwing out the high and the low and recalculate your average since you've got four brand new vehicles that we've approved, we're inclined to approve, which should be a tighter. You know, you talk about standard deviation, so there should be a tighter shot group on what their true maintenance costs. And if you do that calculation since twenty, instead of twenty three, five hundred, it should be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty thousand eight hundred.
Rusty, I don't know what to tell you other than our guys are good at what they do and our fleet is getting older. We're only replacing about half of what was recommended to be replaced. So, I would anticipate our maintenance costs to go up even replacing four vehicles.
And remember, a police car lasts an average between two to three years. It doesn't last five to seven like a typical passenger vehicle would, because they go twenty four seven.
Yeah, I'm just.
Just saying.
Just also on that, the we need to be a little bit fluid when we're talking about purchasing police cars as against maintaining old police cars, because especially in the current situation, I've been on the front a lot with the supply chain. We can order these vehicles and and the and the state bid, they're saying, we don't know if you're going to get these in April. We don't know if you're going to get them in March. We don't know if you're going to get them in May. So, it might be mid-year before we get these new vehicles. So, we still have to maintain the old ones up to that point.
Well, you're talking about something that's near to my heart. I have two vehicles. One is fifteen years old. One is twenty eight years old. I can assure you, it's a whole lot cheaper to maintain a vehicle than it is to buy a new one. So, I wouldn't be opposed at all to increasing the maintenance budget. I'm going back to last budget season when our late mayor Val Carr had such a passion for the work. Now, it was it was certainly looked at and I think exhausted in terms of how all that went, but I think the basic point is it costs a whole lot more for a new vehicle than it does to maintain a vehicle. I recognize in the police department that that may be a little higher usage, but to your point about the the supply chain, planning for us to be able to maintain what we have might be a wiser route. And down the road, if we get to the point where we need absolutely need new vehicles, okay, we need new vehicles, but I think the the goal, at least of this council, has been let's let's increase efficiencies, decrease debt, get staff up to levels that are that are functional and healthy. And, you know, then we can have the the icing on the cake or the new vehicles and stuff, but just because everyone else is getting new vehicles, I don't mind driving driving an older vehicle that's well maintained. So, I would vote to seriously look at that extra expenditure on new vehicles and look at increasing the maintenance budget.
Yes, I'll just comment that until you walk in the shoes, caution you your interpretations, because these folks work really hard. And I firmly believe in providing the tools to them to do their job and efficient and comfortable. I just said, try on those shoes.
My response to that is I was a maintenance officer in the army for two tours. So, twelve months each tour, I and I guarantee military vehicles are driven harder than military police vehicles. They are. If you see where off-roading goes across country in combat, they're brutally. Robert is actually correct. It is cheaper long term to maintain older vehicles than to try to buy new ones. So, I'm I'm with you. I would rather take a look at increasing the maintenance dollars in and question, especially right now when the cost of new vehicles is through the roof because the supply chain is completely broken down. You may not even get a vehicle if you order it. So, instead of budgeting for new cars, it may not come until two thousand twenty three. I'd rather see an increase in the maintenance and then the next council could take a look at whether they want to put the new cars when the price for vehicles, once we get them all off the ships and out of the docks, start coming down. So, I agree with you, Robert.
And if we don't buy them and they don't come, we're not going to spend money anywhere.
Right.
Right. Whether we budget or or not.
And and another thing I would I would add to that. I have a couple of thoughts. We we have two fleet guys. As the fleet continues to age, that's more and more time for those same vehicles to be in the shop out of service and more time on those two fleet guys. And we can't do everything in-house. When one of those guys has to take the vehicle down to the shop down the hill, someone has to bring it back. And so, there there's there's a lot that goes into that maintenance consideration and the logistics for doing that. Another another thing that goes into the police vehicles in particular is this is a lesser point, but it's it's a morale thing for our police officers and for other folks who drive the vehicles for police and for and for the public works guys. These are their offices. They spend a great amount of time in there. And just because the miles and everything aren't showing up on the odometer, it doesn't mean it's not getting the beat out of it. And so, the vehicles do have additional wear and tear that may not show up on the odometer. And so, there it's, we haven't replaced vehicles, I think, on a large scale since two thousand sixteen. And this create, I I appreciate what's being said. It does create a ticking time bomb. Because at some point, the vehicles will need to be replaced. Something will break catastrophically on it. And then you're going to, we already have it, we already have a backlog of non-replaced vehicles that are over their recommended service life and it will need to be replaced all at the same time. We have seven Chevy Colorados that were purchased when.
Early two thousands. Yeah, it was the, actually, Kelly would know better, but it's.
I was here.
We we bought them, we bought them all at the same time. We still have them. And we, I think we auctioned off one last year and I thought, well, I could use it, I could use it, pick up this for beating around. I looked at it on the auction side. I'm like, no, I don't. But they they all get used uniformly in a pretty good way. And then you find that they all need to be replaced at the same time. And so, you have things that just keep marching. I, this one is needs to be replaced. This one needs to be replaced. And ultimately, they all need to be replaced. And then you're at a point where we are now. That's well, which one do we do first? While we can, while we have to prioritize, because vehicles are expensive. What what is the worst of the worst? And then the the thing that still needs to be replaced is going to have to hang off another year or another two years or another three years past the day yours originally wanted to replace it.
So, and if I could just tag on, I agree with your statement. Vehicles, maintaining it long term is cheaper than buying new. However, these aren't your normal vehicles. They're hard on them. When they break, they break. And it's a long time in the shop. So, it's not like your personal vehicle where, you know, you'll baby it a little bit. I mean, we're, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna say this, Ella. We're so efficient. When they do their driver's training, we make them take the vehicles with the crappy tires. So, we don't burn out a new set of tires. I mean, because they shred a set of tires just in their training day. That's how, I mean, it's it's hard corners, zero to sixty is fast and sixty to zero just as fast. So, they're they're not, they're hard on them. And you and I can't echo, I can't say it loud enough. These guys take pride in their cars and one way to keep staff is give them nice things too. Not that I'm saying I'm for spending money, because if you ask any of my staff, they know how cheap I am.
Zero to sixty and sixty to zero in a brand new car versus an old car is going to wear out your brakes and your tires at the same pace. So, we've got to be talking about different parts, different components in the vehicle if other than tires and brakes.
Rusty, with all due respect, we've been doing this a long time too.
Well, I'm going to just say, I don't think in all the years I've sat on council, I've known Kip to be fiscally irresponsible in any way. He also has the snowplows and the trucks and the vehicles that maintain this entire city and our road system. If he's saying there's an issue with vehicles and he needs to replace them, I'm going to trust the expert. I have cars that are more than seventeen years old, so I believe in keeping cars and maintaining them. And I ride my cars because I four-wheel Jeep. So, I don't baby them, but it doesn't compare in any way, shape or form to a snowplow or to a heavy, huge machine that's operating. There is a difference. There's a difference in maintenance.
Police cars.
Right. And police cars, there is a difference in maintenance. You have people puking in them, peeing in them, kicking them, trying to get out of them. You have dogs in them. It's not the same as your BMW or beautiful truck. It is not the same. And they can't control some of those aspects that happen to them. They also have electronic equipment and emergency equipment that is required by state and law to be put in them that some of our vehicles are older and don't aren't up to par. So, those things then have to get put up to par as well. And I'm going to go to the chief and say, what what's what's up with it? Because I don't have a clue. I can tell you how I think you ought to respect a vehicle and how long one ought to last. I I have two hundred thousand miles on my Toyota Tundra and it's just going to keep going till the day it won't anymore. But that's my personal vehicle. I don't have people puking, pissing and kicking the windows out in it. And if I did, I'm going to want a new truck. Well, and these these new, the new vehicles will have more electronic capability than the current ones, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, and it goes with technique, you know, advancement, advancements in technology so that. The newer cars have got LED lights and LED uh emergency equipment, which is less stressful on the vehicle than ever the old one. So. You know, there's always an update, but I'm, I just wanna go back to a point that Michael made about the morale. Um, you know, and I can't, I can't speak for all the guys and girls that, that are, they are their offices. But just today, um, for, for, from my perspective, I had to go down to um, to uh CBI down in Pueblo to drop off some evidence. And the vehicle I, I've, I'm assigned has got a hundred and forty-five thousand miles on it. And when I got in it, I, I can remember thinking, I hope this car gets me down there. You know, and then when I was given the car, I said to the sergeant, I said, what's that funny smell in this car? He said. She said, well, this is the one we used to bring the evidence back from the, the waste landfill on the, on the Kelsey Bethel homicide. And it's like. Can we get new cars, please? You know, it's crazy. So, you know, from a morale perspective, just for my own um, um perception. Um, yeah, I don't know what the guys are thinking, but it, it does a huge morale boost. Um, when, when their office is a lot nicer than the ones I've got now. I mean, with the guns and the radios, you look at every single police car and they've gone through the upholstery. On the driver's seat and there's all foam coming out, you know, and to your point, um, we can get new seats. But there's gotta be a cric- critical time mass time where you say, how much do we wanna invest in this old car?
Right.
You know, so.
Well, we probably need to try to see if there's a step, go ahead. I was trying to wrap this up.
I of course agree with you too. Um, I, it's, it's one thing to say that. The way the police cars are treated is not a way that we would have any of our personal vehicles treated. But the difference is if we want to go out and buy a new car, we make that choice with our own money. We're not making that choice with our own money here. We're making that choice with taxpayer money here. And I'm keeping that in mind, that if we all as individuals want to go out and spend. Forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars on a brand-new vehicle every few years, that's our money to make that choice with. It is different when we are deciding to do that with taxpayer money and we have a duty to be as. Efficient as we can with it. Again, it's been said many times by almost everybody here. It is cheaper to maintain a vehicle than to purchase a new vehicle. Now, I can find that there's some sort of compromise in between increasing the maintenance budget. And decreasing the amount of vehicles that we plan to purchase the next year. It might be hard to go ahead and get our hands on, I believe it's four vehicles, right, that we're looking to purchase. That might be a hard task to do anyways. So isn't there some sort of room to say, let's increase the maintenance budget? Plan to purchase one or two vehicles this year and stretch that out till the coming years?
And that's. I would, I would support that.
Well, it, and it's a great point, and that's exactly what we've done. There is an additional backlog of vehicles that is recommended for replacement. Kip came to me with how many initially on your total list?
Oh, there's eight in this budget.
Well, well over a dozen vehicles uh that are due for replacement. And we said, we, again, in the interest of staggering them, so you're not replacing them all at once and setting up yourself for a time bomb several years down the road. We said, no, we want to stagger them. And so that, because we have not replaced vehicles in five years, that's what, that is exactly what has happened. And so we're, we're there with you. It's already been done and we scaled back. Um, the original ask, I think, was for maybe another four, between four and ten. So it's what you're asking.
He brought me two lists of vehicles to replace. Um, of those two lists, he prioritized them because he's like, there's no way this is gonna happen. So of the list he brought, there was eleven on that needed it ASAP. Um, of those eleven, there were six in the PD and five in parks, buildings and grounds. Uh, we did not budget all those. And then outside of that list, I have. About seven more vehicles, he said, for later. Um, that need to be replaced now, but he's like, there's no way. And we don't wanna replace all of our vehicles at the same time because they all come due at the same time. So.
Well, yeah, okay, just to try to wrap this up, I'm with, with you, Stephanie. It's not my money, it's taxpayers' money. Uh, I could go with buying two new and, and then bump up the maintenance and, and. I hate to say it, if you, if we're worrying about morale, we could put a little bit more money in the uh police officer's salary. Uh, bucket when you're allocating money out, because that's a direct. Dollar going into his pocket versus, you know, he drives a new car. Uh, but I would support the two new cars and a maintenance bump and not four.
I would say, ask that officer that question.
Yeah.
Um, I, you, a, a compensation comes not just in, in your salary. Compensation is a full, full package. It is benefits, it's your salary, it's time off. Uh, vacation, it's holidays, and it's also the tools to do your job. Um, finance, instead of using paper and ledgers that would take weeks to do something that takes moments now. They have computers that are up to, up to speed and will run the software that they use. Um, it asks a lot of a person to not have the decent tools that they need to do their job. And as Hillary said, we have people here that are frugal and they do the best they can. We have had a backlog before and we worked really hard using the savings in our fund balance to. Roll and over time, get our rolling stock back to a decent level. It's just like, I mean, how does that appear when we're driving junk around? I mean, that doesn't appear to look very well and, and as if we're maintaining our assets as we should. I think, I think you're creating a bigger problem. As you can hear, the backlog is huge. Most of those vehicles were, I've been gone seven years. They were purchased way before I even left. And I'm telling you, you are creating a bigger monster. I understand what you're saying, but it costs money to do the job that our citizens ask for. And not providing the tools is gonna cost more in the long run. I promise. I've seen it. I've accounted for it. Over many years. And I'm not trying to change your mind. I'm just telling you. That you're creating a big monster. And it, it's not as if it's out of control. It's four vehicles. So, anyway.
So I'm gonna just say one thing. If you, we just talked about taking money to pay off the debt of the park. We don't have to do that. That money can also be used for the four vehicles. Things can be allocated in different ways. So to say it's taxpayers' dollars and I'm not gonna do it, we're not taking extra dollars. This is what is proposed already in the budget. It's there, it's not going anywhere. It's not going back to the taxpayers either. It's not going to though. We all know that.
Well, it said there was an item on the, uh, on the proposal of, of decreasing the mill rate by one point seven five percent. And so, and some of our, our community have already suggested that as well. Why don't we do that? We're not doing that. And, and just finally on this, and, and I understand, I hear your perspective, Kip. I hear your perspective, uh, Steve. Just on a practical level, I look at how I live my own life and I would apply that to how I spend the people's money. I have a, a twenty-eight-year-old truck. I thought, ah, should I put any more into this thing? I end up towing. A trailer from Arizona, five-thousand-pound trailer with this truck of mine. That thing purred like a kitten. I'm like. Wow, I guess I will think about fixing the oil leak. I think I, I will fix, think about fixing the, the wind, the windshield on it. So. In the same way, if you've got a smelly vehicle that has been, hasn't been cared for, that's pride of ownership. So if we have smell from the. Kelly Barrett case, let's spend two hundred bucks and get it detailed. You know, and if you've got a seat that's, that's the seat, all the stuffings come out of it, spend the money to put a new seat in it. And that increases the morale because you sit in a seat and go, oh, look, I got a new seat. That makes a big difference to me. I mean, the fact I don't have an oil leak, the fact I've got a, a new windshield. Makes a big difference in terms of my morale with my vehicle and my budget says, you know, I'm fine with that. So. I just think that I wanna apply what I apply in my own life to how I spend the people's money. And if you take this back and you go, okay, this is really absolutely what we need compared to some of the discussions we've had here today. I'll reevaluate it, but those are my comments.
So can I just add one last thing? Because I know we're trying to go. Agree with you completely on all the other fleets, but these are emergency services vehicles. If someone's life's at stake, I'm sorry, I'm gonna throw that out there. You have to get there. And you can't take a hundred and fifty thousand mile car that might need a transmission or an engine rebuild. And say, well, I'm gonna take that car there. I mean, I'm to the point now where we're asking the chief to not drive certain vehicles because we need to get rid of them instead of spend all the money on. But if we wanna, I mean, I'm, I'll tell you, you wanna increase the maintenance budget, please don't. I think we've accurately defined what we think we're gonna maintain for this year, regardless of the vehicles you replace.
So, Kip, I absolutely adore you. But I cannot let it pass without pointing out that when it comes to um. Government trying to maintain its budget and its funding, that is always the battle cry of public safety and public health. Um, so that just, that struck me, of course, that, you know, again, it comes down to the fact, how many vehicles do we have in the fleet for the police officers?
Seventeen.
And how many are used per shift?
Well, on a Wednesday, um, you probably got six. Six per shift, right? But on a Wednesday, because you've got double coverage, yeah.
I'm not sure what you guys rotate them at.
Yeah.
So what I'm pointing out is if we have seventeen cars and even if all four of those completely break down. That still leaves thirteen and you're saying we usually run half of those during the shift. Um, so again, just pointing out, um, I do appreciate it. I know you to be very fiscally responsible. Um, but it, it, I, I'm sorry that it had to go there threatening public health and safety um over this issue.
No, I appreciate your comment. And I actually agree with you completely because when it comes to budget talks and the PD wants something and we want something somewhere else. The, the emergency service always trumpets, so I, I totally relate.
And I, and I wanna add one more thing to this. It's like, okay, so if you've got four vehicles, you're. And, and you look at what if you are to have, you say you have two people working in the, in the bay in terms of repairing vehicles. Well, what if you look at an increase in staff there instead, instead of the vehicles? So you have a more timely turnover and you've got a more. Uh, efficient use of what we've got. So I mean, is, I don't know the cost benefits, I'm just suggesting, what does that look like?
So we have two mechanics, we've had a vacancy for two and a half years, we can't.
Employees are ongoing expenses, more expensive. They are the most expensive part of any organization.
There's, I'm not seeing a consensus here with this topic. So I don't know what needs to be done in order to come to one.
The city manager's gonna need some direction.
I saw a compromise laid on the table.
What you propose?
I, I would propose, um. I, I would like to propose that we change the purchase level to two vehicles. And then um, have you guys come back to us with what that looks like adjusting the maintenance budget as well, keeping those other two vehicles in the fleet for now.
Could I just make a point on, on the point you made about how many vehicles we've got? Uh, seventeen. Um, primarily, we've got way too many vehicles. Let me tell you that. We've got way too many old vehicles. And we need to get rid of some. I mean, there's no, I, I asked, why is this fit? We've got a vehicle sits out at the police station, I've not seen move yet. Uh, it's a Jeep and we need to get rid of it. We don't need it. So I wanna, you know, why I said four vehicles is I probably wanna get rid of six of them. Um, and, you know, and because there's no point having six old vehicles we don't use. And we, we could get money for them. Exactly. And I don't know why we have so many.
We all sell them and come back to us with the money.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I would suggest is we get rid of a lot of these vehicles and trim the fleet down and get. Vehicles that are capable of doing the job that we need them to do.
Yeah.
Well, just as, as a footnote to that, that is great. Vehicles that old and that beat up bring about fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. Believe me, you don't want them.
Something I'm observing, just generally, is I'm observing a lot of micromanagement by a board that's supposed to be looking at a higher level. And for us to be telling the staff how to manage their departments, that's not our job.
Right.
That is not our job. And, and to micromanage. Um, maintenance budget. Um, I don't know. I just think, I just think.
All right, and the policy level would be maintain your vehicles versus go buy new ones.
And they do.
End of story.
And they do.
And to be honest, budget is one of the biggest roles that we play as council oversight of the budget. So. You know, to, to criticize us for going through the budget and asking questions about where the money's coming from and where the money is going. That is absolutely our top duty as council members to do.
That is not what I said.
I think. It is a unique stance, though, to want to nitpick on four vehicles from. A particular department that we all know to be fiscally conservative and who is at the epicenter of caring for this community. I think if you wanna micromanage the budget, feel free to. I have no issue with it. But I think you may wanna consider other areas before you absolutely determine that this is where it must be from.
So this is just one of many areas. I don't think we're necessarily nitpicking this area.
What, the tough part too to think about, like, when I say seventeen vehicles, there's about eleven of them that actually do the responses. There's, the rest are, there's a, uh, the, uh, where'd it go? The, the Humvee, that's more for parades, um, those type of things. Um, some of the command vehicles, they're Jeep Patriots, like, I can run faster than those. So they're, they're not all response vehicles, just to keep that in mind. Um, so.
But are the ones you're asking for response vehicles?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's where I take issue.
That's too high.
So there's lots of details.
Lots has come out in this discussion, you guys, a lot. Like, we're starting to look at, okay, what's it actually look like? So you're saying it's not just one of seventeen, replacing four of seventeen, six of what's are not being used. Now you're changing. You're changing the perspective of what you're presenting here significantly to say of the eleven that you have that are response vehicles. What percentage of those are really falling apart and can't be maintained after all the discussion we've just had? And then what does that number look like? And is it still four?
And on top of that, thank you to the chief because you provided quite valuable information. About the number of vehicles that even you don't see as being necessary and that, you know, whether it's fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars per vehicle. Still, that's that, that much less money of taxpayer money we have to spend. And certainly that's an example of, hey, you can come to us and say, I have five vehicles I wanna sell and scale down the fleet to save on maintenance cost. I'm pretty sure everybody here is gonna love to hear that.
And, and then the second question is, so if you're gonna replace four of those, are you gonna sell four more? So does that mean six plus four, does that mean ten vehicles you're gonna go bye-bye this year? If you replace that four, are ten vehicles gonna go bye-bye this year?
Yeah, if I replace, if I replace four of our current patrol fleet. Then I would, I would love to get rid of these vehicles that we don't really need. Um, and, and trim the fat from, from the police fleet. So we've just got exactly what we need. Ri- rather than, we don't seem to be ever getting to dispose of old vehicles.
So maybe you're sitting there.
You keep the old, you retain the old.
We retain the old backup. Because your main line, your frontline fleet is unreliable.
Right, and that.
And there's other, I mean, there's other vehicles, like, there's a two thousand and seven Chevy Colorado with a lift gate on the back. It was an old Parks vehicle. We, we put that at the PD so we don't have to call somebody in after hours and they can, they can get dead animals. So I mean, there's, there's different, there's all kinds of.
And so I'll give someone, and then one, one final, final, final note. Uh, some, I believe some of these vehicles that we're replacing are also sedan, front-wheel-drive sedans. Yep, and Woodland Park.
Who's brilliant idea was that?
Oh, they're older than this.
Uh, yeah, I can guarantee. In Aurora, I did not have impalas that were front-wheel-drive.
There is a good twenty percent of houses that those vehicles would not be able to respond to in, in the winter.
Replacement vehicles are foreign interceptors that have four-wheel.
Four-wheel drive, yeah.
Right.
So just for time, do you have your direction, Michael, that you need?
No. All right, I'll make, I'll, I'll make a proposal. I'll make a proposal that those six. All right, I'll make, I'll, I'll make a proposal. I'll make a proposal that those six vehicles are sold and those are offsetted the budget. Um, I have a problem with four, but if you feel you need four, I'm okay. I, I'm okay with that, but I'm um, I don't think I want to let it bog things down. I think we've had a good discussion about this that really highlights the fact that where our heads and hearts are at. And um so, I don't want to get stuck on this any further, but I, I do think that that it brings the fact that we do have vehicles we don't need. And then the question is, how many of the ones you're, you're replacing do we really need? Or are they gonna end up being like the six that are already parking? Because you're paying insurance, you're paying, you're paying um, licensing on those vehicles too, so.
And and I, I would ask on that, if we could, uh, please get the four vehicles before we release the six. I don't know when these four vehicles are gonna get here, so.
And I, Councilmember Zuluaga, I really appreciate your continued effort to compromise on this, as the three of us already have. But I would really like to ask for the other three council members to meet us in the middle on this.
I'm right, I don't have a single problem with what you just said. My only issue, my only concern is they can't guarantee that they can sell those vehicles. They could get rid of them, though.
We'll get salvage for.
No, I'm not saying give them away. This market is fabulous. This is no need to give stuff away.
We can get it, we can get scrap for the vehicles. We, we will get something. It won't be a lot.
Right.
Uh, but the very least, you'll get yourself.
That's a, that's a, that's a mentality I don't share. If I have a vehicle I'm gonna get rid of, I'm gonna put the necessary into it to present it like it's, you know, put lipstick on the pig type, I think.
I'm gonna put a giant red bow on it, man. We, we are going to do our best to sell it. We, we absolutely, well, we use an auction site, um, and lots and lots of eyes see this. Actually, I had this conversation earlier uh, with the school district who's using that site now too. So a lot of eyes get it. It's online. Um, and so that helps us get the best price.
Yeah.
But sometimes, the thing is, just junky. But we, we do our best and we have a process that works pretty well for us.
But cleaning it up and getting rid of them and the licensure and the insurance and so on and so forth is a step in the right direction as well. So.
So does it sound, do we have a consensus and guidance for you, Michael?
Well, well, I have, you don't have a consensus, but I think you're gonna have a majority. I, I've got some other things that I'm gonna be asking for. And it looks like we're being very generous in this area. I, when it comes to the final vote, I will be generous in both areas. If, if it plays out the way I hope it does, I'm gonna go ahead and support the proposal that Robert had, which I think everybody was saying they could live with, which is get rid of the six. That's what I'm saying. I think there's a majority. Uh, so we're gonna get four new vehicles after, or we'll, we'll put in for four new vehicles. God knows when they'll show up. But you will go ahead and start getting rid of some of them at least. Um, and maybe hang on to a couple, and that would at least give a four-person vote. So we can move on to the next topic and, and we'll see how this plays out as we go through the remainder of the budget.
There's another option. The other option is you drop it to three vehicles, you increase your maintenance. You don't know if you can get your vehicles by mid-year. So maybe that's a more realistic compromise. Is drop it by one, increase your maintenance number. And then you're, you're, you're really working with the reality of what we're dealing with, we're supplanting. You're not hanging out your hat waiting for, for um these vehicles to come, and they're really not coming, but you work on the ones you've got, so.
Right, you know, I'll make the next step to compromise on that too. So it's up to the three ladies of you.
So what is the proposal then? Three vehicles?
No, I agree with the first stance of getting rid of the others and getting the four.
So, okay, so you would go with the four new.
Yes.
Get rid of the six.
Yes.
I'm listening to the staff. I will go with the right.
Yeah, so you.
I haven't heard a person say anything about it yet.
So Kelly, are you gonna do four?
Yes.
Four and make, get rid of? All right. This for working, for moving forward in the budget process because we're not casting our final vote.
Right.
On the whole budget.
Correct.
I'll go ahead and give you your fourth vote. I don't know, Robert, if you'd make a fifth. I know Stephanie, you're not.
I, I, I mean, we've come a long way on compromise. I'd like to see a little bit of movement from these other three, but apparently that's not gonna happen.
Well, as I talk this through, to up the maintenance budget and to go with fours doesn't make any sense with the way this discussion has gone. Doesn't make sense. So I, I think when, after I speak it and I say it again, it's really I think that the idea, if we're gonna up a maintenance budget, if we've got supply issues, let's look at three, let's look increasing our maintenance. And let's move forward with that. That's where I think is really um speaks to both issues. And I'm not saying, I mean, Kip's already very frugal. I get that, Kip. You are, and I respect that exactly. But uh, I guess I'm even more frugal when it comes to what I live on within my own life and I have to apply that to what I do on council.
My position is, is I'm supporting the budget as it's presented. I don't think the maintenance cost is going to need to be increased. If it does, they'll bring it back just at the end of the year. You know, this is the best, this is our plan. This is the best information we have now. What happens between now and the end of the year could be completely different. And if we can't buy the vehicles because of supply chain, the budget doesn't get spent. It rolls to the next year in the fund out. And we look at it again next year. So the supply chain will take care of itself and the, the budget won't get spent if we can't buy the vehicles. Which means that what we have will have to be. And we'll look at where we are as we get there. But this is, this is the best knowledge we have as of today. And you know, after being through it a few times, it will change. But we actually do. And what this looks like will be two different.
So the, the opposite thought of that is, we could go with two vehicles, upending the maintenance cost. And if we discover that the supply chain is not an issue and we are able to get vehicles, as you said, budgets change throughout the year. There's nothing that prevents them from coming back and asking for an appropriation from us for additional vehicles.
Uh, I, I would, I would push back on that, um, because there is a calendarized time constraint on purchasing vehicles. We purchase vehicles off the state bid. It's a guaranteed best price. We don't just go buy them off the lot.
Right.
Um, each manufacturer or dealer for the manufacturer has a quota of vehicles um, that they use for fleet sales. And those, those usually get depleted in January. Um, and so if you're not in by a certain date in January, generally, you're out of luck until the next cycle. Um, and then you are forced to buy it off the lot. And typically, um, that's a lot more money, especially right now.
So what is our guarantee that even purchasing those will be able to get the stock?
If, if we get in uh, within the quota for those vehicles, we, we will have, we will have our ticket. It's just a matter of when. Uh, in my past experience of non-COVID logistics headaches, um, usually that's in the April, May timeframe for light-duty vehicles, heavy-duty vehicles. It takes longer. Um, we only have one of those, but like with uh interceptors, usually it's April or May. Um, but we will have our place online. And then whenever they do arrive, I think anyone would be a fool to guarantee you a date on that.
All right, so I'm gonna go ahead, we're gonna wrap this up.
Well, Hillary, you need four, so I'm gonna give you the fourth vote.
So.
Well, it's not a vote, but you need four to give guidance.
We need a majority for consensus.
Right.
But the point I'm gonna make is, I understand what you're saying about the maintenance budget, but our maintenance expert is right here and just said, I don't need the maintenance budget. I need the four vehicles.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, he's the expert. I'm not. I don't know what the city needs plow-wise, cop-car-wise, but he also told me their first responder cars, which is critical to the functioning of our city. And if my expert is telling me, this is what I need and I don't need a further maintenance budget, and I see him squirming in his chair over this issue, I feel like we have a problem because we're not the experts. We may control the budget, but we're not the experts on each topic in this budget, and our experts are here telling us.
I get it. And Hillary, that's what I'm saying. I'll go with the four, get rid of the six. No maintenance. And I think you got your four, which is a majority to move forward. But it's a straw that's been added to cattle for the total budget. I'll see where the rest of the discussions go.
Very good. So, Michael, you have your direction then, and we're going to go ahead and wrap up. You have the consensus for the four vehicles.
Okay.
And the maintenance budget. But we're gonna, is this about the vehicles still or a new topic?
Do you have additional items besides the six? So I think this is why the mayor's bringing this up.
We're gonna do another meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Do you want to finish this one off before?
No. Because it most. We'll start, so everyone pay attention. Next meeting, whenever that occurs, Robert gets to start with his issue. And then you get that issue, and then we're gonna move over to the ladies so that they get an opportunity as well. So. Council, do you want an additional meeting or to reconvene this evening?
If it, if we finish up and we uh have time to handle more of this till, not say nine o'clock, I'm.
How many more topics do you have?
There's only one more on this.
You have one.
I got a bunch and yes.
You've got a bunch. Let's finish Robert's question after council this evening, and then we will reconvene with another meeting. Okay? Yes. But this evening after council, we will then reconvene to finish up Robert's question. We are not going to move on to new topics. We will just do the one question. Okay? Is that all right with everyone? All right. This meeting is adjourned.